Yes.
I got, I got.
No.
Right.
I don't think we've gone the last two years without this.
One hundred percent.
I think it's people are getting a lot more immune to it, even though they're getting.
A lot less.
What we've seen in the past.
Well, in our family, we're sure. He had all the symptoms, but he tested negative.
That's great. All right. Anything?
I went over and took a tour of the community action housing in the Mitchell building.
Oh, yeah.
It's really well done. They're small. Oh, my gosh. Small. I think he has started. Big point. Okay, well, it's six P M. And so I am going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me to say the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then quick roll call, if it's okay with you. I am just going to call out who is up here. You probably all saw Brendan's message, which is pretty exciting. So he did ask to be excused. And if there's no objection, we will excuse him. And Chuck is online. Otherwise, I see all council members present. So we'll just go with that. And next up is Mark, but I don't see him here. He has a small, a short presentation that he would like to give. This has to do with the information that I sent out regarding Cook Road, which is very exciting. We had always hoped that this would happen, and now it's starting to happen. And so that's fantastic. But.
I think he ran back to his office to get some.
Okay, thank you. Can kind of do a quick roundtable if somebody wants to. And if you've got anything to say or share, we're waiting for Mark.
Excited about everything happening. I'm very potential.
I think I was seeing the long rate route.
Right?
Yeah.
There were three different lawn maintenance crews out on my way here.
Excellent. Thank you, Nathan, for doing that. Nathan's making that all happen.
Like that's so hard. Me too. It's just me.
Started the meeting, and whenever you're ready to do your presentation, we will hear you out.
Okay, I'm starting. All right, so I have up on the screen over here, if you'd like to look at that, just a few things. Bill, if you go ahead and go to the second slide. This is the basic priorities that I see for public works and engineering over the next four or five years. There's a lot of other smaller things, but really I've broken it down into four parts: transportation, operation, solid waste, and then parks and recreation. And I've got a bad heading on the third one. It should be wastewater. So transportation, the Jones John Liner Trail Road Corridor project is is the main thing that we'll be looking at, I believe, over the next three or four years. We've had some really good news on that that I'll talk about in just a minute, but the main priorities within that are to complete our protected right-of-way acquisitions. We have two. We're getting very close on the Nelson property acquisition. That's in the process of possession and use right now. And then there's the second parcel that we also need to purchase to protect the North Trail right-of-way. So those are two things. And then the projects themselves will fall in sequence beyond that. The main one in the short term would be the Jones John Liner Undercrossing Project. Without that, the entire project doesn't really work. And I've got some ideas on that. Operation Solid Waste, as you know, we're getting, we're about seventy-five percent on the the operations and the wastewater buildings right now, should complete in mid-September. You approved the large change order to add the yard paving and the storm drainage, and I'm working with the contractor right now to review the second floor improvements. I got an estimate from them today that I haven't reviewed very closely yet, and I'll be looking at that tomorrow and Friday. And then following that completion of that project, the unfinished piece of business is the vehicle storage building, which we've talked about. We weren't able to move forward with it under this project just because of cost. The architect's estimate's about three million dollars for that building. I think that's pretty high, because we're going to have the site basically pad ready for that. So that building should be significantly less than that. But that's a priority that I would like to suggest be tied into the completion of the facility plan for the wastewater facility, which is the next item I'll talk about. And that's about the window of 2026. The next one is mislabeled. It should just be wastewater treatment. We have the short-term projects that we're working on right now, the laboratory operations building, which will be complete in September. Then we have two others to do in the short-term realm. One is to demolish the existing laboratory operations building and put the anoxic tank back in service. That's planned for design yet this year and construction in 2023. And then the following project is to replace the blowers in the in the biosolids system. Those are two things, just to keep the capacity of the plant or maintain and establish the existing permit capacity for that. Then we'll be doing a facility plan somewhere around 2024, 25 window, and a possible upgrade in 26 and 27. That's going to be about a twenty-five million dollar project coming up. And Parks and Recreation is just to finish the two major park facilities that Nathan's been working so hard on, Homestead Park, which we are currently estimating will be built in 2023, just because we haven't been able to get the core permit as yet. And it looks like it's going to be later in the year before we secure that. Now, we've got that broken up into two phases. We have the the infrastructure work, which is fully funded. And the phase two is the buildings, which we believe is funded as well. That's the four shelters, the restroom, and the care picker. That's under design right now as well. And then Memorial Park, we've just started the final design for that. We've broken that one up into phases. Also, we have infrastructure and then the play improvements, and then the splash park is a third one. And so that's basically our priorities. Bill, if you would move on to the next slide. This is the corridor project and what I've been presenting to the various agencies we've been talking about so far this year to try to fund it. And the thing I've been emphasizing is the way transportation comes in and leaves Cedar Woolley. We have F and S grade road coming in from the northwest. We have Cook Road from the west, and then SR twenty from the southwest, and then Highway nine from the south. Everything kind of all points to the center of Cedar Woolley. So we've got all that concentration and traffic hitting that four-tenths of a mile section between Highway nine south and Highway nine north. And of course, the idea for that corridor project is to provide an alternative east-west arterial to do that. Thirty-eight million dollar project. We've already got seven and a half million of those projects funded to be constructed or already built. And that's a combination of the developer work that's going on on Trail Road and also the Signal at nine and one. The next slide, please. Good news that I mentioned earlier is DOT and Skagit County have been working on funding the upgrades at I five and Cook Road. And Skagit County was informed early this week that they were awarded a National Highway Freight Program grant of five point nine million dollars towards a six point eight million dollar project. Bill, if you go on to the next slide, I'll show you what that looks like. What this will do is basically is, let's go to one more, if you wouldn't mind. Next one. That's going to add signals at the two ramps from I five to Cook and a new signal at the old ninety-nine intersection. And they'll be sequenced such that that'll help with the backup problems that currently occur there. They're also adding an additional lane on the north and south side of Cook Road, crossing the old ninety-nine intersection and going across railroad tracks. So this is, this is really a big thing for the region, because I actually had a conversation with Peter Janiky today. Mayor has mentioned our mention, mentioned our meeting with him earlier this year, and he, he was really strongly emphasizing his concerns for his companies, both Janiky and Sedron, with the traffic issues that are going on in Cedar Woolley. And I, I wanted to just bring this information to his attention. He hadn't heard it yet. That the county has bingoed on being able to handle his number one concern, which was this intersection. So that's pretty huge. And he was appreciative to hear about this and the efforts the county has done. And then the second thing is I gave him the same spiel that I just in a brief moment did with you on the corridor project and how that's going to help with the the volumes on Highway twenty and and spread that traffic out through the area. So these are really high priorities, I believe, for the city. And I know you, you've been very supportive of moving these forward, and we want to continue to do that. I didn't get a chance to talk to him about how Sedron's actually doing, but when we met with him earlier, he had mentioned they had already deployed twenty of those facilities nationwide. And so he reiterated to me that we're looking at some explosive growth of those industries. We hope to capture our fair share of it here. And he also told me, which you may already know, but they're currently building a new building out at Hamilton. That I asked him, I said, how many more employees do you see that bringing into the area? And he said, two hundred. So that's another four hundred vehicles trips a day that are going to be going through Cedar Woolley and not originating here, but they have to get through that bottleneck you saw of all those roads coming together. So anyway, pretty huge thing. He's talking, you know, I, we've been in our, the letters of support he's provided us for the project applications. He said six hundred to a thousand jobs related to Sedron alone, but they're actually talking about much more than that in their longer-range plan. And I don't think we're going to see all of that. I'm not sure we could accommodate all of that, but that's pretty exciting news. So that's basically everything I have. I can send you copies of this stuff if you're interested in seeing it.
So are there questions for Mark?
I'm excited about it. I read through the packet earlier that that there were the fourth. And yeah, definitely. Hopefully that clears up some of that congestion in a big way. I think we'll, you know, clean up there.
Yeah, timing on that. I didn't mention it, but they'll, the grants will go live fairly shortly. They had listed in their grant application, design in twenty-three and right-of-way in twenty-four and construction in twenty-five. I have a feeling they'll be able to compress that a little bit. We would like to see that, of course.
And that's all county property over there, of course. So it's not directly related to Cedar Woolley, but that would be coming from funding up for the additional million that they're relaxing would come from.
Yeah, the, the, they have nine hundred and eighty-two thousand committed to the project. Forrest Jones, their engineering services person that I talked to about this, said, would Cedar Woolley be willing to commit to some of that? And I said, well, we've got thirty-eight million dollar project to do it down. We've got it. But we're going to support you in every way we can other than that.
Blue light letters. We're good at that. Yes.
I'm happy to see that. You also mentioned the splash park real quick. I was just curious, do you know off the top of your head, how much financially is left that we need to put forward for that to end up getting done?
So I believe it was around a hundred and twenty-five to thirty thousand.
I was, I was thinking one fifty.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten to it, but you get to figure out those numbers.
Estimation works for now. Yeah.
How much to maintain it?
Well, the way we're doing it is pretty low maintenance. There's not going to be any above-ground things that, you know, can be vandalized. So I'm told by, if they're built properly, you know, it's really just a matter of going in and pressure washing it once a year, winterizing it. And then there's the cost of the water. So it's, it's, if you do it right the first time, and they're pretty.
Pretty kind of minimal.
And then it also, the way they're designed, you know, they're sprayed with waste where just unfortunately, the water just goes right to the sanitary sewer. If you put a research system in, that's where you get into the chemical treatments and the pumping systems. And that's where it gets really expensive. We're looking at the inexpensive way. So.
So there's no other precious. Thank you, Mark. Thank you so much. Always a great presentation and, you know, your diligence with it. I really appreciate you keeping Peter in the loop as well. Like, that's very important, especially for our relationship with, with them. And thank you, Council, for the support that you're offering here, because this does make a difference as far as how we're going to move forward as a city. This is really positive. And, you know, it's in large part because you're willing to support these projects that really makes this happen. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Okay, moving on. Tonight, we're going to be talking strategic planning. And why don't we just, you know, jump right into it? So Charlie, why don't you go ahead and take the lead here?
Yeah, pretty, pretty straightforward agenda memo, just based upon your last conversation. I've included all the background information in case anybody wants to reference it tonight, but bottom line, at the last meeting, last discussion we had, council indicated three areas that you wanted to focus your discussion on. And you wanted to see if you could maybe time it out to spend about the same amount of time on each one. So if you do want to do that, we can, can help time. Economic development, parks and recreation, and housing. And it depends on how long you want to meet tonight, but you know, you can decide how much time you want to spend on each of those or how you want to approach it. Really, we wanted to make sure we had the staff here to support this discussion, but we're, we're not here to guide the discussion. We're here to be a support. So let us know if you have questions and want to know opinions or anything like that. We're happy to weigh in, but we're largely here to just help, help you along.
Awesome.
I mean, if it helps you, I'll offer economic development as personal less.
Well, I think that because business was the largest thing that was mentioned, and it's really important to everybody. That'd be a great way to start. And I don't have a lot in that, in that realm, but I was thinking that if there was a way, because Joe, you're on the, you're the chair of the business development and Sarah or Councilwoman's there. I don't know. So Councilwoman, you're the chair of the finance. So it seemed like if you guys can pull together a forum with some of the business leaders and maybe the Chamber of Commerce or other people that would weigh in on that and hear what they, what they see, what they would look like, and that development looked like, maybe even from different areas. We have a map up there that's provided. We have maps showing our residential areas, our commercial areas, our multi-use areas, and see what those minds would come together to see. This is what it would look like. Not that they would book businesses, not that, that they're, they have a mindset to see it that way. And that way, it puts out like four or five different ideas of what the city would look like in ten or twenty years.
Well, I know that we attempted to have a couple of meetings with the chamber, and unfortunately, those ended up getting rescheduled and nobody was able to attend, but we did have a meeting for. That was a really good conversation. And it was really good to have Glenn's feedback, too, in everything that he's seen developed through the years, what worked, what didn't, and, and all of that. And so I think that that was, you know, we were, we were kind of in those discussions, but all, and all of that stuff is, is very much, those processes are very long, you know, long-term. It's nothing that we're going to see overnight.
I think we had a fruitful conversation with B desk as well. Something that I spoke to Charlie about was having a meeting similar to what Nick had brought up, maybe bringing in John Collin, legal, just kind of going over with some of the other bigger business owners, maybe a couple of smaller ones, people who are looking to expand, just whether or not they're actually planning on doing it for us to get an idea of what we can do to be more hospitable or what we can do to help foster growth here in a manageable way. I know that was something that everyone was concerned about, was making sure that it's manageable. You know, we don't want to have that bottleneck be just explosive with traffic for three hours each morning and each evening where you can't get through. So it would be good, I think, if we sat down with some people like that and actually had a roundtable discussion as well. Get ideas. Let everybody throw stuff at the wall and see what sticks.
I think something that might be helpful for all of you is to, so I'm in touch with Diane Camiak. She is the, she leads the Northwest Innovation Center in this region. She presented to the council before, but I think it was long before any of you were on it. But she has worked with different different cities and different regions where they have put together plans for bringing in businesses and then, and even how to take the businesses that they have and really enhance them and help them to grow. So I can try to arrange or not just try. I know I could get Diane in. I could get Diane to either meet with you as a individual group, whether it be the, the business or finance or whatever, but also maybe even do a presentation before the council, so you can get an idea of what she might be able to suggest or even offer.
Seems like if it's two or three members of the council, then it could be more of a candid conversation with some of our business leaders, our e-commerce, you stack. So they can kind of just shoot out what, what the ideas are in different ways. Not all of them are going to be the exact same. And they can see like, oh, that kind of makes sense, or this fits, or that, that could happen if a big box store did this. I've heard people talk about Applebee's in town. I've heard people talk about, we have thirty local restaurants. Why would we need an Applebee's, right? And all of that land is out there. And of course, that's the growth of the opportunity. So having an idea, just kind of like that responsible growth, going back to that coin phrase of what's ahead versus just taking it on as it comes and saying, well, we have commercial app. We don't really have an idea what we're looking for.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could be proactive instead of reactive to the things that are coming.
Well, one of the things that we were discussing was the bottleneck that we have in the sense that some of the industrial property that we do have available may not have the infrastructure there to support the type of businesses that are coming in or are looking. And those property owners may or may not be interested in putting the bill to make that happen or to get it. They may just want to go with raw land, or they may not be interested in selling it or putting a business on it, period. And, you know, as, as a city, we can't force those private property owners to do those sorts of things. And so, you know, that's where we, we walk that line, too. So there might be some stuff that's available, but we can't, we can't make somebody do something. And you know, when we look at that, too, we have to look at the surrounding areas and how is it going to affect it, you know? Some, we could have somebody coming in with a great factory of some sort, but you know, is there the infrastructure? Is it, what is the long-term effect? Is it good for Cedar Woolley in twenty years? How's it going to affect that? And do we have the proper housing and stuff to, are we, are we simply bringing people in here to go to work, or are we bringing people in here that are going to live here and work here, you know? And so then we get into that housing discussion as well, you know, that we kind of keep going back and forth on, you know, are, are we doing this in a smart manner? Um, and so those are the kinds of things that we've talked a little bit about. And John was in on, on some of those conversations in regards to the certain properties that may or may not be available with, and, and so, yeah, we have, we have, we have them on the map, but what those people want to do with them, I don't know.
Well, and it's not to say that anybody's going to come in and buy and do those exact things.
Right.
You get four visionaries that look at a blank slate, and they paint their picture of what they would do if they had all the money and all the ability. And then you see, okay, well, that, not that they're going to do it, not that they have the funds or want to do it or could do it. There's a lot of different types of businesses. But you kind of get a glimpse on what that could look like in the future, if these different developers come because of their experience, because of the way they think, because of my.
Absolutely. One of the things that they were, a couple of people that I have talked to, and the portmaid mentioned a bit, too, was the fact that our roads are not, you know, we've got Cook Road in Highway twenty. And so, yes, we may only be ten minutes in from I five, but ten minutes in from I five with, you know, how many semis a day coming around behind X amount of traffic and all of that sorts of stuff, when, you know, Burlington, Mount Vernon has something to offer that that's much closer. That's the kind of things where, right now, when people have been kind of talking about where to go, that's where their choices have gone. And the other way, not necessarily because we aren't hospitable as a city, because from what I've been told, that we've actually been really pleasant to work with. But that we just don't have that. And so it's like, you know, what, how can we, how can we make them want to come here?
So it seems like roads would be that top, top portion.
That's, yeah, part of it, which is, which is why these projects are very important. We want to have, you know, development movement forward. We can't be stagnant. We do have to move forward.
And I see it like the revenue generated is going to come in from industrial manufacturing. It's going to come in from retail. It's going to come in from tourism. So you can't put all your eggs in one basket of any single one of those. And the ability to have not only a really enjoyable city for the residents, but tourists walking through that, too, is, is part of that business. So I guess like, you know, what, what could we do over the next, you know, short term, the next year? And then what, what does that look like in the, in the grand plan, if we were set like goals for, for different items? And I think having that, it'd be interesting just to watch the, the video, if it is recorded, but if it's two council members, I don't think it needs to be, and it could just be a private conversation with some people. And you guys kind of come, you know, it seems like it made sense. You know, and I'd be interested to hear what you guys come back with on your different things. Yeah, these, this is the idea they had way outside of what we were thinking or what we had in mind with their, their leaders and what they, their different thoughts. I don't even know.
That would be good to get those different perspectives, because you're right, they will think of things that we would never come up with. They might go, well, hey, you know, this bridge over here would allow me to come over here, but you need to get the county to expand its weight capacity or something else of that nature that we might not have considered. So that would be good. And I lost it. I'll get it back.
There's a lot there, because the business is such a huge.
Right.
Huge sector.
Right. Well, I mean, and it is listening as well to people that, that are working here and are seeing this day to day as well. I mean, one of, one of the things I've heard about the street fairs is, you know, as much as, as people love them and we really want to promote them and bring some people in, when I talked to several business owners, they said, that actually deters our business. We make, those are our, our smallest sales days. So, you know, because people are there, there's nobody, they can't park, they can't come in, they're not, they're not who we're, you know, marketing to. And so, you know, we, we love to see that some of that stuff happens, but the reality is for the businesses, it's not always the best thing. You know, and I only spoke to a couple of them. Some of them may have storefronts that are, that do generate those business, that business. And some of them, they don't, based on what they, what they are selling and, and what they're doing during those times of years, too.
Be careful what you wish for sometimes.
That's exactly it.
I was kind of thinking that's why that maybe just a director of the Chamber of Commerce or two people from the board or something like that be in on that meeting to represent the small businesses or bring in a couple of other small businesses. Too big of meetings, obviously, they get going in many different directions. But getting, you know, a number of key people seems like it's really beneficial for, for really opening up the eyes and the ideas of, of what this city will be.
And I'm not sure how many people have gone into the chamber to inquire about any of that information. I mean, I, I've had several people tell me that they haven't gone in there at all. They.
As far as business owners or just general people?
Well, both. I don't, I don't know how much traffic it's actually generating for new business or, or what they're, what the plan is. I'm not, I'm not aware.
There is a fresh perspective there now. We do have Monique, who is the assistant director to the chamber, and she does have some, I, I had lunch with her, and she's got some great vision going on. I don't know if that's something that she would want to bring before the council and kind of share what they're doing, if that is helpful, or if somebody wanted to actually go in and meet with her.
I spoke with her today and to share with her some ideas that I was going to present to the council when it comes to the Parks and Rec area. And yeah, she's, she's definitely keen on, on the need. And it's almost like, you know, the businesses aren't going to come to me. I'm going to campaign and reach out to the businesses. And we're going to create a, a community of people that we draw the team in, one way or another, will make that. She's got, she's got some definitely good ideas.
Now, who's handling, the downtown association does not exist. Who's handling it? Because somebody is posting Facebook messages and forwarding stuff. So somebody's still actively.
It's nobody that's, nobody that is in communication with us, or neither are we supporting them.
Okay. Yeah, I tried contacting them on the Facebook page. I just asked, hey, you know, mind, tell me who's running it. They never told me who is running it. They just basically said, hey, any business can send us something. We'll repost it. They just kind of went through a generic line of what they were going to do. And they do seem to post stuff, but I don't know if they're rejecting people or anything like that.
Is it just advertising or is it negative?
No, it's all seemed positive. What I saw, it was more or less, you know, hey, we're having a sale here. We're doing this. We're doing that.
Yeah, it's more or less forwarding information than another business in town may have, you know, Oliver Hammer's having a sidewalk sale, the forward that a local business is doing something that forward that, you know, just kind of sharing Facebook page messages and stuff. I just wasn't sure, because I was under the assumption that it had dissolved. So.
It did. Yeah, and they, they did address that as well. They said, yeah, it's all.
It would seem like in that business kind of meeting, even outside of it, looking at the impact fees, I think you mentioned that. And how, which was a great idea, prorating it over a period of time, you know, start with the half, or if a building exists, why would you redo it? Impact the, that kind of stuff to make it a little bit more appealing to different types of businesses if they were to come in. I don't think. I don't think that's, you know, that is a breaking point for some people, but if you're really struggling to open up the business financially. It's a, it's a challenge, and I don't think the city is gonna help you succeed, it's it's hard work, but it's also having enough. To to make sure that you can carry yourself a year without needing to make a profit. That's a, that's a challenging thing for sure, but it does help, it does kind of. Could be another thing to come out of maybe impact fees, permits, things like that.
I would be interested in looking at the impact fees, um and then I'm not sure if there's ever been anything done on, based on the number of employees. That the business intends to employ, but obviously, if somebody is going to be um employing. You know, a handful of heads uh that are. Working in our community and there's, you know, tax revenue and everything else that's coming in from it, they're supporting our community, they're part of our community, they're giving back to our community. Then I wouldn't see any reason not to provide some sort of concession for that.
I'd like to hear from Mark regarding this, because he would have a good perspective for all of you regarding the impact fees.
Yeah, yeah. It's something that I've, I I'll be setting it moves with various ones of you to talk about a little bit, how we fund infrastructure projects. Um there's a couple of things that went through my mind as I was listening to your great ideas. I think we should be probably as part of our self-marketing that we do. Uh be touting the fact that Cidwell, Cidwell is not waiting for these things to happen, we're actively pursuing them and trying to get ahead of it. On these infrastructure improvements, so and the examples we just looked at on the board are are pretty telling on that, you know. You know, we've already have that thirty eight million estimated transportation projects, we've already got pretty much seven and a half million of those. Uh either funded by the city directly, a lot of it with impact fees and refunds. Uh or uh we've done it through our planning, uh and working with the developers that have built for us a part of our route already. And and another part is gonna be coming with the bucko track, so it's a good story that's going on and one. Uh Peter said something to me that I heard him say before, even more clearly today. Yeah, he said, you know, there's improvements to your infrastructure, infrastructure that needs to happen. And we don't feel that we should have to do them. Uh we think that that's really the the uh the role of government to make sure that those things happen, and I'm sitting there going, yes, I. I certainly agree with that, that's, that's what we are doing in Cidwell, and we're not the only ones, of course, but. I think it's a story that that could be told uh pretty well, because we have a good plan and we're following. But the reason that it works is because there's a corresponding amount of development uh that provides impact fees. To provide us the matched dollars to go after these grants that we're going after. They have to work together, because if today, right now, we had our discussion today. In building, planning and engineering about where we're at right now this year, I mean, permits have basically stopped. Uh we've had one, two in the last three months. And so that's a concern to me, you you've all seen the arterial project listing that I keep up on how we're gonna fund these projects I've been presenting to you. And they rely on a certain amount of growth to uh put those dollars into the kitty for us, so it's critical to remember that. That these things have to go kind of in lockstep, uh one can't get too far in front of the other, I totally agree with council's. Feeling, we can't have all this development happening before the roads are planned for, but on the other hand, one sort of pays for the other one, so. Uh there's a, there's a real balance that we we have to strike on that. Mr. Janik, he said something that I think you would probably hear from any business owner, well, we wanna make sure the roads are available for us, or or we know they're gonna be. And that's the point I've been making with him, uh is that we are planning for this. It will take some time to get there, but the plan is there to make it happen, and I think our track record has been pretty good on that too.
So if a new building is built, then it makes sense that an impact fee would be there, or even a prorated one. If a building exists and we're just moving another business in who's already paid for it. Um even though you discounted impact fee might, might help that. Um it seems like with with the level of growth, maintain both together. I know that, and I I can't really compare them, but there's a lot of cities that we can kind of look to that have grown exponentially over twenty years, thirty years. Um I kind of think Mill Creek, and I kind of think Glidwood, because they're close, but um. I I'm just curious if they had that forethought beforehand, because you can't go back, they can't go backwards and go, man, we kind of missed that. It kind of, we we should have did this or should have done that, or maybe we tapped it down a little bit here and waited, how more opportune I uh opportunities came in. And so uh I think giving us this opportunity is definitely, you know, that that time that we're at that precedence, we're about to probably see. Uh a growth explosion, kind of like you mentioned, so.
We did, um uh we did, what, in the early two thousands, Mark? Um prorate, we did delay impact fee payments, did we not? And so when I came on council, what I heard was that it really set us back, and it didn't work in the city's favor. And we've had to pay, like, we had to pay catch up.
Yeah, it it's a two edged sword to be sure, uh we were not alone in that, Burlington, Mount Vernon, and Acordes Hall lowered their impact fees. During the Great Recession that we had in oh eight. And uh and we did too, uh we we pulled them back some. And as I said, you know, if you're gonna move forward with projects, you kind of need to have them, but on the other hand. I think it was a recognition that, you know, businesses were hurting and and I I think there was some positive things to that. John can tell you a lot more about that than I can, but I know like BYK has come in, now they're predominantly uh. Residential in our community, but not everywhere, they do commercial as well, but they like working in the secret world. Reputation uh secret worldy before John and my time was just the opposite. We were not known as a not business friendly friendly place, I don't think that's true anymore. Uh and 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 it's not that we're bowing down to the development gods or anything like that, but you know. We're we're trying to do it intelligently and and making the point to them that, yes, you're paying impact fees, but look what we're doing with them, you know. So that that's a good story to tell.
Well, we just to balance that, just to take this information and balance it as you're making decisions.
We traditionally have the lowest sales tax in the county, right? It sure has retained a lot of car dealerships here, hasn't it?
Well, in the two thousand eight, I think affected everybody, and we probably wouldn't have seen any difference with higher or lower impact fees for what. That was a, that was an interesting time. Do you guys feel comfortable segregating kind of into housing or or parks and rec for a little bit, since it's a good segue to move kind of visit? I would almost like to do the Parks and Rec, because it does segue into that, and the reason why I think so is because. Bringing in and making it comfortable for patrons that are here, that are shopping, making it comfortable for residents, for families that are here. As well as uh people kind of coming through, if they like the town, if they like the beautifying of it, a lot of that's cosmetic, a lot of that's our parks in the way that. Uh we've got the landfill right downtown, I use it all the time, and I beautify my yard by putting it in there. And the part kind of the feel of what we've got, when you're here, you're like, this is a great place, we should, we should, you know, open up a business here, or do something here. Or come and visit, so I like that idea, and it was, as you guys know, it's my, my hope to see a. Full-time director kind of moved into place for Parks and Rec as far as getting with the um. The new CEO of Skagit Tourism, beginning with the Chamber of Commerce, to getting with different places, and see how that kind of works out. Maybe by promoting from within and then hiring a backfill to cover the roads and the, and the parks as before. Um to give that, I made up some of these guys here. Look at them, uh these are simply samples of just, you know, what could be done, and it seems like we have so much opportunity. So they're just little fires. And it, the pictures we have online on our website really could be updated, that does take work. The lingo on the website, if you guys gone over there, Parks and Rec, it's just something that we do on the side, right, it's not like something that we really shine for. We have a lot of opportunities with our parks, where we have Riverfront Park, and on the website, it doesn't really put forth the opportunity that's there. I I had a great time there last year, we had a lot of events there, we've done a lot of concerts there over the summer, we know that. But uh the fairs and all that stuff, that's opportunity to draw people in and to have, to show them what those amenities are. Same thing with the other parks that we have, we have like thirteen different opportunities. Somebody could come here and spend the entire day here with their family in certain areas, and come back the next day and redo it in new areas and have a whole new fill. And that's a really exciting opportunity that a lot of communities don't have, we have disc golf, we have butt, uh the skate parks, we have. We'll have pickleball courts eventually, we have bike tracks, we have so much stuff going on, that if we were to tap into that. With the right vision, with the right person putting that vision forth and kind of doing that. That it seems like we can assist our businesses, assist the residents, and assist with, you know, um. People enjoying their time as they're passing through over to Win, over to Glitch, over to Baker, into Canada, over to West or Eastern Washington. And it really gives a good opportunity to see that growth as people are visiting, it brings in revenue. And if people spend the day here, I was over in Coeur d'Alene, and me and my wife, we had nowhere to go, I mean, that's a much bigger area. But they had the lake right there, they had the parks, and they had restaurants all right there. And so eat at all these restaurants, visit the stores, go right to the park, play around with the dog, they had dog parks there, there was trails, it was really nice. And being able to have that scattered kind of to the community and utilize that to beautify the community. Kind of thinking like garden settings, anytime someone goes somewhere, they see a beautiful neighborhood to a park, it's. All unique in itself, a fishing pond with walkways at the Swift Center, the State Hospital with a lot of trails there with the creek running through. So that's, that's my pitch on getting uh the right guy, I mean, this is just a sample, this would not be something we would do, but. The right visionary in place to to look at something and say, that would be beautiful if we did this and this. As you guys can see, there's a couple of those concept things right here on the back, and we have a lot of, a lot of concepts that are coming out of our parks right now. That are just awesome, right, and it's a matter of kind of putting those into reality and tapping that into.
I think what you've done here is really great, I think what I see when I look at this is just marketing. And I think that we could utilize the chamber and hoping not to do that, and getting these pushers and different things out while not having to right now. The money into a director position, uh that would just be my. So I could even help facilitate that, I am on the board of the chamber, so we could, we could really work.
If we're looking at the roads getting more intense and needing to add additional personnel to the roads, and parks and roads too are the same crew. If we're looking at getting other engineers into the offices for the traffic and planning, um then we're already looking at hiring people. And all we're doing is we're taking somebody who's already dividing their time, and it could be anybody in that role, or anybody in that department, and moving them more to full time for that area. And backfilling with somebody who's going to be more of an entry level, splitting their time again, so we're really creating a part-time position. And that does free up a lot of other areas, so it would be a cost benefit, I think, to even our city structure.
Where would the cost benefit come from?
In the, well, in the long run.
I mean, we're already bringing in a lot of baseball tournaments, we're bringing in all sorts of things, we've got Riverfront Park. People use, utilize the trails, they utilize Northern State, uh. I, I'm just, I'm not into hiring, if if we're gonna hire somebody, I want somebody with their boots on the ground.
That person would not be in an office the whole time, they would be dedicated.
I don't know what your idea is on that, you know, so I I wanna hear that more before, I mean.
So I wonder if this is a conversation that we could actually have with the Y, they are doing some recreational sports with the new program. The programming that they've got going on here in Cidwell, they do have other things that are going on. But that may be a conversation that we can have with them, and it could, so perhaps it's a slow start, but it might establish something.
We have a lot of facilities there.
I'm sorry?
We have tons of facilities available.
Yeah.
As far as parks and stuff?
Parks and.
Yeah.
And baseball fields and soccer fields and.
But I'm just talking about if you want somebody who is promoting, the Y would be, I think, maybe. A good place to kind of have that conversation to begin with.
When you guys go to the website and you look up Parks and Recreation, are you like, this is where I wanna go and take my family for, you know, doing this? And so the pictures, I think, could be increased and and much better taken, I mean, you see a front door on the website, things like that, that does take time. Um somebody that's boots on the ground, that's laying track, that's also going back to their office and running through the vision, and then going back. And dealing with the water park, dealing with various things, and just spending more of their time dedicated to that area. We have a river that runs through Skagit or Cidwell, where do you see the river at?
We do.
Could be done with marketing, like, you know, maybe and revamping our website and things like that. While entertaining the idea with the chamber and the um YMCA. I feel like we could get a little bit of step of that before we. Get so big that we need that position of a lot of money.
Yeah, I see why leave the stone unturned, these are all good ideas, and once we have enough use that we can financially do it, I mean. His position used to be two different jobs, and now he's working one man doing two shows, basically. And I I don't want to have people getting burned out, so there is a point where we have to split.
I'm gonna tell on him for last Friday, I saw him scraping gravel on the side of a road, and I saw him running a weed eater out by Rite Aid. And he's the supervisor.
Yeah, I think it's honorable to our staff, and I'm not saying that Nate would be the person, I'm saying that that application would go out within the Department of Crews and and whatnot. So I'm not trying to advocate for a certain person, but promotion from within and the opportunity to to experiment with them, or to, uh you know. Push forth their vision, their ideas, that are visionaries to help improve our community before we need it.
I think we need to use our tourism too, I mean, the community as a whole, the county, has hired a gentleman to come in and do the tourism. And I think that we need to tap into that as well, because that is really gonna come out of part of our taxes, so. I think we ought to take advantage of that as well.
I was looking at some of the photos from Andy Porter, I don't know, and I I know other people that are willing to like, hey, I'll do a bunch of photo shoots for free. For your website, just to get my name, to say this is what my business does, that are way better than what we have on there as far as photos and the lingo, and it really shines.
Let's go for it.
Yeah, definitely. If you wouldn't mind, I have two cents on that position, I actually thought about that a great deal over these fifteen years I've been here. I was in Colville prior, and we actually had a a recreation coordinator working for us, we didn't have a director. Uh and and that was ran separately from the the parks uh maintenance crew. And I watched that kind of dwindle down to where it couldn't really work after a while, but. Uh the difference between that community, which is half the size of Cidwell and here. Uh is that they pretty much controlled all of the recreation facilities in the town with, except for the school system. Here, we're really kind of scattered, I mean, we've got Janiki Fields, which is maintained by the school district. Uh we've got now the Y, which will be doing their own thing, uh we have certain things, and and until recently, we had the Bay Ruthly handling their thing. And then we've got the Soccer Association and a Football Association. So uh there's, there's a number of different uh groups, buckets out there doing the various things that really um. Nathan's kind of the one string that connects a lot of those, but we don't really uh direct those activities, they're, they're separate. And so to have a a recreation coordinator, I I don't know. Right, if with that system we've got now, or is somebody even directing that, I just don't know that it really would, would accomplish what we think it would. To me, it's, it's, there's too many different strings going on, now if that could all be brought together in some manner, that would be a bad thing.
What's the sense of community, right, everybody is pitching in to make these different things work, and I I don't wanna see that the way.
Yeah.
I think somebody being able to tie the strings together and be promoted within their positions of doing good work is always a benefit for anybody. It gives them something to reach for too, and a reward for what they've already done. Um somebody that, you know, we have gates to trails that look like the gates are shut, I didn't know that back trail going to the State Hospital was an actual trail, so I just went around the gate and walked it. I did a uh a ride with Nate over there by the dog park, there's a trail right there at the gate, I never knew that was a public trail. The dog park could be very much showing, he asked, a lot of those parks could be enhanced and beautified, and that takes, puts on the ground, it takes the guy working that has, goes back to an office. Draws it up, has a vision, goes back, communicates with Mark, communicates with the Chamber of Commerce, communicates with a lot of people. Not a director that's dictating everything, but a coordinator, somebody that's actually working with all these facets. To, and yeah, it is an upfront cost on our part, but as the city grows, if we're expecting expecting any kind of expansion to be in front of that as people come in. Would be a low cost benefit, and I'd say low cost, because the parks are pretty much in place or funded, a lot of these guys. And what we end up taking shape would be, we fund basically a part-time job moving up, a promotion and a and a hire on to increase the staffing of that crew. Which will be needed anyways, if we're, if we've got more roads and more service that needs to be done, and bigger. If we're, if we've got more roads and more service that needs to be done and bigger parks and more parks. I think as we do those kinds of changes, it might be smart to also consider the ease of maintaining them. You know, if you can make sure that uh someone doesn't have to get off a riding lawnmower and get a push mower or weed whacker to do a section. That saves them hours in the long run, uh making it so that we're uh making sure that things are strategically planned and that way will save us on paper. So I think that would be a smart thing to keep an eye on as well.
I, I think personally, we should talk, talk to Nathan, who probably got the best grip on. What occurs. Uh that's my own.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Owen.
May I make a statement?
Yes, go ahead.
I listened to this and it sounds like a recording. I mean, we've been over and over this for years and even had the downtown committee. And nothing happened. And nothing's gonna ever happen unless you have something that draws people to Cedar Woolley. The downtown is not gonna do it. Uh we've got like Riverfront, uh Hammer Heritage. You could put on festivals, you could, there's a lot of recreational stuff you could come up with that would draw people in. But uh it's not gonna do one hour of bit of good to hire one person to try to do something, but he ain't, he, he's not gonna do it. It's, it's gotta be up to the, to the city, to the mayor and, and Charlie. And some way we have to come up with something, something that draws the people in. Uh I've said that before, but nothing ever happens and. This, this talk, 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 only, only Glenn, myself and, and you. Know what Cedar Woolley used to be like. And let's face it, it'll never be that way again. But I would like to see something recreational to bring people in. And that, that might get them interested, you know, and it's, it'd become more, more acquainted with Cedar Woolley. But I don't have the answer. I don't have a magic wand, but uh what I hear tonight is just. It's just something that's happened before, on, on and on and on and in the end, nothing happens. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh thank you. I, I, I hear, I hear you. Um I know one thing that has happened and I'm looking forward to it happening again this summer. And that is the Little League that we had that came in, the Little League competition. That was amazing, the way that it brought people in and they loved our town and they started to explore our town. So we need more events like that perhaps. I'm not sure. And I'm not even sure how you make that happen.
So with, with events like that, uh and with Parks and Rec, you utilize your relationships with these or other organizations. With the Little League, with the sporting events, with the select leagues as well, because they're constantly participating in events. Um whether you're hosting indoor basketball tournaments, um out softball, baseball programs, whatever it is. But those kinds of events are going to bring in people that would not normally come here. Um you're looking at generally somewhere around ten to twenty, twenty-five teams. Depending on the type of program that you're looking at coming in for those events, you're putting. Um people up in hotels in the surrounding area, they're coming in and shopping and they're spending money that, you know, wasn't generated here. And um it takes a lot of work by people that are willing to get involved. Um and that's part of the thing why my understanding the Downtown Association kind of fell apart too. Is because it was the same people showing up and doing a lot of the work and you get burnt out. It's the same things happen in some of these organizations is, you know, you get the same people that hang on for years and years and years and they get burnt out. Um so i- it in part is also getting people to want to take part in it and want to take pride in their community. And wanna take part in the events and, and what's going on, getting, you know, making people aware and getting them involved, you know, the first time. Bringing people in, having them show up. How do we get them there? You know, how do we make them aware? Are they even aware? Are we? You know, are there flyers up? Are they, do people even look at those anymore? Is it social media that has to be utilized? I mean, the reality of the situation now is that people aren't always picking up their local newspaper. So you have to adjust your communication style with the times and the generation and the people that you're targeting and looking for. So I think that a lot of it, some of it will come, comes down to marketing. Um and then you've got to kind of, you know, maybe start with, start with. With one or two programs and say, okay, where can we bring, what can we bring in and how can we do? I know like Winnie Hauser, Hauser. Um soccer um has a lot of soccer tournaments and stuff that come through it through the fall. Um and even in the summer, I know the La Liga program out of Mount Vernon was utilizing it every single Sunday. Um and that was bringing people in from Mount Vernon and Burlington and um other areas. And then they would come here and then they would go out to lunch and those sorts and, you know, go here and there. So it's like, how do we bring in more of that? How do we bring in more community or programs and the stores aren't open on Sundays?
At the Skagit Center, Christa King, when we opened it up as the Skagit Center Christa King. Part of the thing there was that you would have somebody supporting you and helping you with your events. And the ideas that you might not think of and ways that you would guide you along your first events, you're not just like, this is too intimidating for me to do. And uh, you know, to expect the council or just people from the community just to run all of that forward. Eventually, you're gonna see growth happen a lot quicker, businesses grow a lot quicker and those activities kind of tracking down a little bit. Having a coordinator, having a person kind of working with other people to, to guide them, to work with them as well as other tasks would be beneficial. For, for that kind of role, if that's what we, we would like to do, host events. The skate park doesn't need to be a circuit competition. We can start off with just a skate park competition by going to the YMCA. And I, I'm more than willing to do that. Go there and just say, hey, guys, we'll just have a competition and you guys have some uh judges and you guys judge. And let's just do a Cedar Woolley with the residents here. And then if another city wants to come and hit that circuit, great, we'll, we'll go to that circuit doing. But we can start it here, but it takes somebody to put energy for it and to hire somebody, but rewarding them by saying that we appreciate what you're doing. We recognize your efforts, what you have done in the past and what you can do for the future. That's, that's something that also inspires. So inspiration. But I would like to hear Nate's, Nate's talk, uh because you, you deal with all this. You've been doing it for years, so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I don't have too much to add to what you guys are talking about, but if you look at our neighbors, you know, Mount Vernon, Burlington and of course, they, none of them have parks departments. And so, and it, over the years, they've added that rec side that you're talking about and the, and the director level stuff. So it's, it's kind of the natural progression as a community grows to go that way. I just don't know if we're there quite yet, but uh, you know, if you created the position, I'm sure the person would be busy because they, they could take. Cause I, I do a lot of that stuff already and I coordinate with the different groups and the log rodeo and. Kind of filling that role, filling dual roles as it is, so I'm sure that person would be busy.
I hear what you're saying and I can appreciate hiring from within and, you know, grow our own. Um I just feel like for right now until that, till that time, utilizing these other and helping the YMCA. Do stuff here and the chamber get things like, hey, businesses, let's be open on Sunday because they're having tournaments and we're missing the mark. I feel like we could work in turn, we, that way right now until we get bigger later.
On the Parks and Rec side, as far as like moving forward, um not do a director right now, not pursue that. But work with the Y, work with the new CEO over there for the um, cause it's some, the skiers, I've heard of the name. But the new CEO of the tourism of Saskatchewan County and supposedly he's got a lot of experience and like you said, it's taxpayer paid. If we work with the Chamber of Commerce, somebody that, you know, it's not a full-time position, but being able to kind of tap into that as a start. See what it looks like in two years, see if, see if it does happen. It'd be great if we utilize our river some, sometime. I know it floods, but with enough. Thought in front of it, we could have a really nice catwalk that, that our people go to the river. Maybe we rezone and allow for a business or two around that area that people then could go have lunch and go back to the ballpark and play. Or, you know, a vendor like we talked about, um a thing on or, or food trucks or things like that over there. Um so I mean, there, there is opportunity there with the Parks and Recreation and we, I'm down to let go of the director position for sure. But I think that we wanna tap into the opportunity we have to make it an inviting place, that's beautified and working with these other communities. Especially if we already have resources at the Chamber of Commerce. The website is, is something that needs some work. I mean, it, it does, you know?
I hundred percent agree.
We have so many better photos and we have something that when you go onto the website, you can be like, this place is beautiful. What's here? What's this? And you go to Parks and Recreation and some of those photos I've seen or that we have in calendars or that we have on postcard, they're beautiful. And we can get that, we can capitalize on that. And we already have, one day maybe find a bridge over the river, not a full bridge, but an archway or something. That creates that, that wall, something, but tap into that. And you know, honestly, something like this really isn't very expensive to print. Um this is probably substantially less time consuming than updating the website. But you're completely right. Uh it does need to be updated and it would be spectacular if we could get uh. Someone who just wants their name on the photos, willing to go out and do a nice photo shoot uh for the city. Uh especially at the time when all the flowers are blooming, things look nice, that would be. Well, even this weekend, I mean, I'll, I'll seek if we can do it this weekend, cause it's a great opportunity with log and rodeo with the parade. Things like that to get the drone photos and the, the pictures and, and see if the individual is interested in it. They've mentioned it to me a couple times with other, other areas. Um but also purchasing through from or seeing what kind of deal we can get with the other artists around town, the photographers and shop them, right? And, and buy what they've got and say, can we utilize this on your, on our website? And they get credit and we also purchase from them. So that could be something. Websites aren't difficult. I've created a number of um, uh, the campaign one wasn't, you know, all that in a bowl of cherries. But, you know, a couple of others that I've done and they're all very similar. You want people to stay on the website even if they link out of the website. You want things that are interactive and catching, not a huge bunch of lingo unless they want that, not all galleries unless they want that and give people what they want. But keep them within the website, helps promote it.
So when we're talking about all of that, one of the things I can tell you from um doing the state tournament that brought a bunch of people in. Is that one of the things that we did that helped to make it very successful was one, we did flyers and we took them to every hotel in the area. That we knew people were housed at. So, but we took the effort to do that. We also provided each team with a liaison, so to speak. So every team had somebody that they could talk to specifically to give them direction of where to go to eat, what to do. And, and constantly trying to push them and pull them back into town. Um, you know, we wore local clothes and try, you know, Oliver Hammer shirts or Shelley Shack or whatever it was. And we tried to, you know, oh, some, cause somebody would make a comment, oh, go here, that, you know, and we'd give them. You know, we talked to some of these businesses and they give us little flyers or little something to try to draw people in. Um, you know, people knowing something was going on in town, so, you know, they're gonna have a band at the Woolley Market or something like that. So it was like, it was very much going and specifically talking to every single business that we could, letting them know what was going on. How could we work together? Do you want to be involved? Do you not wanna be involved? I mean, some of them don't want to be involved. They're not gonna be open and they just soon not deal with. A whole bunch of kids coming through their store too. I mean, we have to be really aware of all of that sorts of stuff. Um but it was. It was honestly a lot of communication and a lot of work.
On whose part? Like you're, you say we, you say us, like.
It was the Little League.
And are they consistent? I mean, is that something that they're willing to do every year? I mean, is that something that they're?
When they have the opportunity to host, this, the girls tournament this year is not going to be anything like it, it was for the boys that happened a couple of years ago. Because of COVID, the, the planning process being shorter term and all of that stuff. Last time we shut down the street and had a, had a street party. Um and a host and one of the local restaurants wanted to host a coaches dinner and meeting and after-party situation. You know, there, there was, the business has gotten involved and they wanted to take part and they wanted to do all of this stuff. Um but that again came down to sitting down and talk because also in doing all of these things, somebody has to accept the liability, right? And so there was also a lot of liability waivers and, and other situations and, and issues that were handled and. Yeah, and also had to pay for um pay our fees and permits and, and all of that good stuff too. For all the different things that, that went on. Uh so we just had to, to, to take care of a lot of stuff. Uh and so really, I think what it comes down to too is, is, you know, letting a lot of these organizations around here know that, hey, Cedar Woolley has this available. Come utilize us, you know? You, you guys are hosting a tournament, you, you know, Northwest United is hosting a tournament in Mount Vernon. Hey, we have Winnie Hauser. Do you guys have any overflow? Because we, we can't house the capacity that they can over there. The fields are just that much bigger. But if you have overflow, you have a small tournament, you wanna do, split it up and you're running a, a gold and a silver bracket. And you need to send people over here, come on over. You know, it's, it's developing those relationships, letting them know and bringing them in and utilizing what we have. At minimal cost to us.
So I know you wouldn't be able to quantify the cost, but could you estimate like with that effort in there to bring in the revenue within our city? Um it sounds like it's more than worth it for all the hard work that went into that and then the outcome was a lot of joy. You can't, you can't put an expense on joy, you can't put a price on joy. But uh as far as revenue, you think that the businesses felt like this was, this was worth all of their.
We had positive feedback. I don't know what anybody's individual revenue was.
I received a ton of calls and letters, a ton of calls and letters from people who had been here. And as I walked downtown, they were all thrilled to be here. But I do know, I know you worked super hard to make it all happen.
Yeah, I mean, tournament days and stuff, those are sixteen, eighteen hour days. Um but in, you know, off time, as you're preparing for all of it, it, there's just, there's a lot of, lot of work to be done. And it's all volunteer work, you know, so and the, and you get down to the same people that are willing to do it. And so that's what we, that's what we run into for, for any organization that is trying to promote and to do. And that's where Parks and Rec is, it's really gonna come down to going out and promoting what we have here. Um and so that we can minimize those costs, bring that stuff in. If we can bring that stuff in and create a reason. To, you know, to add more boots on the ground and to do all that stuff, you know, cause right now they're, they're short as it is. But if we can create more of that opportunity and we bring more people in and they're spending more money in town and we've got the revenue. You know, then we have a purpose.
I don't know anything about this, um as far as like, um like legalities or different things like that or like. Like called like the cost to come and play here. Are we acceptable where we're at? Are we like, is that okay or did you hear anything about that?
Uh well, one of the hard things was that we couldn't house everybody here, obviously. Because we don't have um a lot of, we don't have the hotels. Um and so we did have quite a few people, you know, they're in Burlington and Mount Vernon. Um some people just chose to commute. Because they weren't too far and didn't wanna spend money. We had quite a few, Nate would have to attest to the managing the um campsites. And.
Our RVs.
RVs.
Before we got rid of.
Yep.
But the, but the price to play here in the, um what was that you were talking about, like?
User fees?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's not a concern. Everything's good there, everyone like that.
Everything, everything was good. Um the, the facilities were mostly through the school district, so we had to work with the school district in order to use the play, the playfields. Um because at the time, we just used Janiki and Tesrick.
Well, just tie in how, how valuable the Parks and Rec is to business.
Oh, absolutely.
The community and how it is, it is an asset.
Right. So it's positive wholesome fun that's going to bring families in. Um and it's, you know, so much is going, going to town because somebody wants water and walking out with. You know, sitting down and deciding and have a great meal and a good experience, you know? Um, you know, it's those sorts of things.
But it takes, it takes effort and it takes, I know that I, I love doing events. I really do enjoy them a lot, but they do take effort. When I think about, hmm, what should I do this year? I'm like, that would happen. Really? I wanna do anything. That's a lot of work. But I do love doing them and that in itself is fun, that recreation and enjoyment. But it does really tie into a community that goes into our next segue, which is really growth and, and what we got. Because you have business, you have an enjoyable community that's, that's, you know, confident in their, their parks and their businesses and you're growing. Right? You're, you're now at what rate, at what level, where and how that works out, so.
I have this question before we move on. Um Airbnb, I happened to pull up that site the other day and I noticed that we are in like a black hole. I have this question before we move on. Um, Airbnb, I happened to pull up that site the other day and I noticed that we are in like a black hole on their site. Uh, so are we, do we have an outlawed or?
No, but.
No? I just figured there's an ordinance or something that made it against the law.
No, it's a, you know, it's something uh, every jurisdiction struggles with. And so I've been, you know, putting a tickler to myself to like bring it to the council, discuss like what sort of rules we might have for short-term housing. Or short-term rentals, sorry, not housing. And then I go and I check Airbnb and VRBO and there's like eight. So it doesn't really seem to be much of an issue.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we need to address it or not. Um.
I've talked to several people that have properties that they consider doing it. Um, and I think the ones that are on there actually do get some decent traffic. Um, but it's usually people coming and going from super long trips or they maybe are do, under construction in their own houses, so they're living here. I think what we're missing is the, the draw to bring somebody in and want to stay for a weekend, you know, the Airbnb, the, the ones in you know, Shalane and Winthrop and all that stuff, you know, they're bringing people in because of their, the lakes and the, you know, water sports and all, and where the snow in Lebanon, then Oktoberfest and all of these different things. And so it's, it's, yeah, but people are driving through to the North Cascades. They're not staying here and that's what we're missing. Is, is the feedback that I got from the people that were looking into it.
We actually rented a house in Seadrill, even though me and Lizzie live here, uh, we usually get all of our family together for an annual event, right? And so we do different places all over the states and it's fun. It's, it's a lot of fun. You have a big old house. So we did one here in Seadrill Woolly up on the hill and it was wonderful. And the, the Lager Rodeo was going on and it was just like, you know, it's really fun just versus a hotel to rent the house, have the dog run around, big yard, kids loving it, a lot of people, I mean, just, yeah. And it's not very expensive either. If we did hone in on that or, you know, even if we, if the Chamber of Commerce wanted to e- explore some of those templates, it doesn't have to be just Park Rec. You can do food with QR codes. And that would be like, hey, we can do this for a weekend. We can go disc golfing here and there'd be one day, a big old water park at the river that's really neat, unlike anything.
And one of the other things that segues back to Park and Rec, Parks and Rec is they have to have the activities to bring these people in to stay for the weekend, right? So we don't, we don't have a lot of those either. I mean, we have Lager Rodeo, which is one, you know, couple of days. And there's no carnival, so it shortens it up this year. Um, we don't have multiple day events that go on in town right now. So we don't have that draw either right now.
We do have our trails and we're getting more of them. We're getting known for our trails. And there's a lot of people who are doing hiking. That's really becoming a thing. So, um, I don't know. I guess I'm, I'm, I, I, I love the conversations happening here, but I think I also believe that a lot of things that develop, it's organic. So when you build something that's really prime and primo, which I really believe that our trails are. Um, and, and then the things that go with it, like Willow's Lodge has a bike tour and, you know, up at the Swift Center, you can do certain things and over at the Veterans Park, you can do the frisbee. And so there are things that are, that we're getting known for. People love the concerts that we have down at the, the park. Um, we are getting known and so, um, I just want to say that I think that we are doing some things really well.
Yeah.
And um, and I think that, that we need to zero in on that and maybe start building from there. That would be my suggestion.
There's only four concerts this year, aren't there?
Yes. Uh, no, there's going to be more than that because actually the chamber is having a concert on the corner.
Cause they normally have six to eight, I think, Rotary.
Oh, the larger Rotary one?
Yeah.
Oh, this Rotary putting on.
I'd say, like Chuck mentioned, like, um, the, the drawing people, I think a lot of people mentioned drawing and it, we are growing and we do have things that we're doing great. But I think the idea is to also, as well as the organic, get involved, get engaged and, and work on the development, the strategic side of how that looks as well. And that'll, that'll go hand in hand with organic growth. But um, organic growth in itself, you know, you always manage through your yard, you, you manicure your gardens and stuff. So it does take work as well.
I'd mention to you too, there's, there's one other gym that we have setting just up to the northeast part of town here that, you know, we're a part of the partnership with the county and the board already. Uh, we really haven't talked about recreational stuff a huge amount. We talked about the trail system. But the one thing that, you know, has been on the books for years, it's developing downward Veterans Park is as a baseball complex. And I've talked to Brian about it several times over the years. What is it going to take to move that forward?
They don't want to do that. They just.
Want to do it. And, and it's not that they don't think it's a good idea. It's just that they're Mount Vernon, Vernon, Cindric. That's, that's the truth. They're concentrating on the things outside the, by the college and other things like that. And I see that's something council might take a hand in encouraging our representatives at the county to, hey, you know, don't forget about this. And because that's really the missing piece, I think, for the baseball tournaments and stuff is having, you know, a, a four field like Janiki, another one, if you had another one of those, you could really run some wonderful programs. You made it work really well, what you had, but you know, that would be another.
But it's a rare park up there. It's pristine, it's rough. And a lot of people enjoy that, you know, you don't have to have everything manicured and.
I have to tell you what Skagit Trail Builders is doing up there.
I, I, I'm up there every day. I walk my dog every day in there.
So that's making what was a really difficult place to walk around into one that it's going to be, I just, last weekend, Danielle and I walked uh, the new bridge that way. They've just got it flagged. I thought they've built a bridge and they were going to do the trail later, but they've already been up there clearing out.
And they built another trail.
All the way around was what they're doing. And so.
They just had a ribbon cutting up there.
Yeah.
Last Saturday.
But some people like it to be more where rugged and uh.
So Nathan has actually had that conversation with Brian as well. And part of the situation is that they, they just don't have somebody to care for. And when those things develop, they just don't have the people and the money to care for it.
Figure they could, they could come up with the capital budget to get the thing built. But how do we maintain it? It's kind of the same thing we grapple with here.
That's the same conversation that I, we were left with a couple of years ago when Little League was inquiring about how can we help get this facilitated and uh, it came back with, well, you know, because there are private entities that would be willing to help contribute to it and, and service groups that would want to get involved, but how do you maintain it? Um, and that, and that's where that got left.
So one, one glimmer of hope on that is uh, as you know, we've been working with FEMA on the riverfront park repairs and stuff and, and process of going through that. Uh, they're real big on mitigation. And uh, we thought about, you know, we, I don't know, we had ninety thousand dollars for the damage to riverfront park, a chunk of that, dispensary pairs. Chunk of that was the baseball fields down there, which has been done how many times since you've been working there. Yeah, so uh, it's possible that we get interest FEMA and mitigation and that would be a prime location if the county would go along with it. And then rather than, because we have taken on the maintenance of those fields now. Uh, you know, us partner with the county to maintain these fields. If they're mitigated out of there, we wouldn't be doing it down there. And just make that a, an expansion to the dog park or whatever is down there now. That's, that's just kind of out there in weeds, but something that, that should be considered. So I, I think that Northern States connection, you know, I would, on the brochure, I would include that in that, you know, because that's, that's in Seadrill Woolly really. And uh, and you know, it's, it's a gem, a rough gem in the making there for sure. It's, it's got a, a lot of real potential for providing that destination. It's busy out there. You all go out there. I mean, there's people out walking around all the time, you know?
So should we move on to the housing? With the business, uh, seems like there's the, the goal of like kind of doing a forum or, or having that, that discussion or you guys. And then with uh, the parks, something to, to recognize that the parks are there and that we can hone in on very, various areas to draw people in. It takes work. Maybe, I know, I don't mind having boots on the ground to go out and put, yeah, but if you, if you guys work something up of QR codes or food and I'll, I'll hit them up in the, the hotels and whatnot. I think that'd be fun and very easy. Um, but then, then we have housing, right? Which is the growth. And that's always been a hot topic. How much, how, how quick, uh, where I did get the statistics that from that last meeting from John, I thought that was very interesting to see what our totals of growth have been since nineteen ninety, even going back. And that's been an interesting deal. But we are at a, at a point right now where it's a hot topic with most of the people I talk to.
I was curious, very long-term, John, uh, to the north, we go up on the bench there. Is there the possibility to expand that direction at some point uh, further? Or is that something where we run into protected land?
No, uh, we, there is no protected land to the north at all. So we can continue growing north.
Okay.
Without any significant impediments of this.
About the only direction.
That's the only direction we can go.
That's what I, I thought, but I wasn't sure if we were going to hit a, a boundary really quick that direction as well. And I put the river down here in the valley, things get flooded. It's actually the best direction to go realistically.
Yes.
It's a little more complex though.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to be a challenge. It's not because of the terrain, you know, you, sewer is more difficult, just is, yeah, it'd take a couple of pump stations up there. Of course, we have a dozen okay, already. Uh, but better, there is that.
Yeah.
You have to run PUD around railroad weekends. There's no permission to go under.
Oh, really?
We're talking.
Oh, well.
Well.
Oh, well, we wouldn't be going, we wouldn't be going north of the railroad per se, not for quite some time.
No, he's, he was saying long-term though.
Yeah, long-term. We're more up Highway nine than up Garden of Eden.
Yeah, that's more what I was thinking. I was thinking you go up the hill on Highway nine. Where, how far can we get away with expanding? I, I know right now the county might not be approving us to go that far, but realistically, if we think fifty years down the road, eventually they're going to approve that uh, for expansion for the city.
Right. And you know, that, that gets us to the discussion of how we grow. Um, right now we've planned our urban growth area to go a little bit north of, uh, north of Bottomless Lake, which you can't really see from the road. You can really only see from maps unless you know people that live by.
Bassett Road, yeah.
So, but you know, quite a bit north of Bassett Road. Um, and so that's, that's one way we can accommodate our future growth is to expand our urban growth area and grow into these new areas. Other ways of doing it, and this is, these are totally city council directives and, and policy decisions is, you know, do we uh, do we increase the amount of housing that we allow in our current zoning? Or put it a lot more in commercial zoning or uh, a mix of more density within the existing city and uh, and they're expanding their growth area. These are things to keep in mind is like how we can grow. And then the tools we have to accommodate growth are you know, single-family housing, accessory dwelling units, middle housing, which is duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes and, and under some definitions, you know, up to like, like a sixteen unit or so. Would be kind of smaller middle housing. And then you go to larger multi-family buildings. You go, you also have larger multi-family mixed-use buildings. And these are, these are the, the, the tools that we have to accommodate our future growth. Uh, I just wanted to lay those out for you so you know what we have to work with as we try to accommodate the housing uh, in Seadrill Woolly in the future. Right now, we're largely geared toward single-family housing on individual lots. So the, if you, if you look at our zoning map, you can see it's largely this light yellow color and that's the R five zoning. And a lot of that's fairly taken up. Uh, but there's still good swaths of it, including parts in the urban growth area. And then uh, then you know, kind of the majority of towns are seven zoning. So that's uh, single-family lots. You can have a duplex if you have nine thousand square feet or more. And that's the, you know, the historic part of town all the way from the river up through this part of town and then be it north of Highway twenty and you know, it kind of feels different. Those aren't, those aren't the, the platted small uh, lots that are a hundred and twenty feet deep. And uh, forty feet wide like we have pretty much here down to the river. And those are a little bit larger, kind of a mix of stuff. Uh, and then once you get to John Liner and north, it's, it's R five. And then we've got the central business district, which isn't really a housing district, um, but we do allow some housing. And then the mixed commercial districts, which don't allow housing except for eight units for building above, got commercial below. So we're not seeing any development happening. We're wanting, anybody wanting to develop housing in those areas because eight units in a commercial building doesn't really pencil out. Um, so look, and then ADUs can go in single-family. Uh, right now we've got, got ADUs fairly restricted. Um, because you have to live on site and that, that seems to be holding the market down. Only had a handful of uh, ADU applications since we've passed the ADU rules a couple of years ago. Um, and then the missing, then the missing middle that I was talking about, we don't really have a lot of zones for that. Um, because our single-family residential neighborhoods allow for either single-family only or duplexes and single-family. Uh, there's really not any place where you can do fourplexes, triplexes, duplexes, except for our, our fifteen zone. The residential fifteen zone. And that's largely filled up right now. Um, we're seeing we've got applications on all the large remaining ones. So there's just a couple of small areas that are left in that. So that's sort of the lay of the land for what we can accommodate, um, and what, uh, what tools we have.
Is Fruitdale going towards the river? Is that all county property or?
Anything south of um, Cohen Road is county. That's all flood plain. And anything on the other side of Fruitdale is um, county and unlikely that you get, you, once you get past that row of houses on Fruitdale, you get into ag, natural resource land. So um, that's long agricultural land of long-term significance. So the county has that zone, so can't be added to our urban growth area. So that's why we can really only expand our urban growth area north of Highway nine area.
Somebody told me Tennesseans sold their property.
I'm not sure which one the Tennesseans. I get a lot of feedback on density. And so I think north is a great suggestion and opportunity to have um, more single-family homes or duplexes, quadplexes versus, you know, densifying and densifying. I don't know how you guys feel about that. That's a feedback I get. I like space. I got, I got two lots with my house. It's, it's really nice. It's almost like having a park in my, it is having a park in my backyard. I do enjoy that. Some people don't want the yard to take care of. They want to just be without that and, and be in a condo or something or apartment. We're smaller.
And feel.
Yeah, so you know, you never know. Everybody's different. So just because I, I, I kind of like space, I have uh, from the people I've talked to. Um, it is that densifying.
That's something I've heard as well, is people don't want us to get to where we have the high density, like a urban center would be. Uh, they like the feeling of having a little bit bigger lot or at least uh, not being able to reach out their window and touch the neighbor's house. I've seen that in a few places. Um, that seemed to be something that was important to constituents I had spoken with. Um, obviously, you know, if, if there's need for housing that's cheaper apartments, things like that, that's, that's finding the right mix, but um, I would not like to see us go too dense. And I think expanding north, spreading out a little bit might be a little bit more of the flavor of our community, um, to keep that uh, rural feel as opposed to feeling like you've turned into a metropolis.
John, how many years have you been planning?
Planning as a profession?
Yeah.
It's eighteen?
Okay, because probably what, twenty-five years ago when I was on this before, the growth manager was jamming people that put mother-in-law apartments in density and you know, they've just been on us for twenty-some years.
So.
Growth management, I'm not blaming it on you.
We still have growth management and it still encourages, uh, you know, what it encourages is, is planned growth. That's why we have an urban growth area. We plan for how we're going to grow in, and so we decide, we make these decisions. Do we want to be dense? Do we want to be more spread out? And then we, then we size our urban growth area to accommodate twenty years' worth of growth. So we do have the ability. So we do have the ability to choose how we accommodate that growth. As the house, you've probably recognized over the past several years, as, as the housing market's gone, um, really kind of crazy. Um, the, the, the state government has, uh, tried to put rules through to, to require more dense. Development, and we're not talking high rises, we're talking, you know, trying to encourage the missing middle, so, you know. They tried to pass rules to require us to do, uh, accessory dwelling units, tried to pass rules to, uh, require duplexes. And all single family neighborhoods, um, and, you know, those, those have passed to varying degrees, but have been mostly watered down. So that's a continuation of what growth management has been doing for twenty years since, well, nineteen ninety when growth management had passed.
Is density.
Is, is encouraged density, and that goes to what Mark was saying, you know, as we spread out further, it gets, it, it gets challenging to, to provide. Utilities and services the farther you go out, um, so it is as a, it's. The, the city as a, a provider of utilities and services, it is a little bit in our interest to. Keep an eye on how far we spread out, because it, it gets more and more expensive for us to maintain all these new roads when you've got. You know, ten thousand square foot lots and ten houses on a cul-de-sac, now, Mark's department, Nathan's guy's got to go out there. And take care of this cul-de-sac that's serving ten families, um, whereas if you're denser, you can get, you know, twice that. Get a lot more bang for your buck as a city, uh, utility provider, um. These are all things that we consider when talking about.
And I know John brought to our attention, it didn't pass in the legislature, but he did bring to our attention where the legislature was trying to pass a bill. That would allow, um, cities to have multiple, um, um, kinds of housing. In an area, so and, and in an R five, you could also have like an R fifteen and. I can't remember how all it went, but I saw Representative Romel today and they're gonna go back and push for it again.
Yeah.
So we, we may be seeing that, that may come to us whether we want it or not.
The mayor's absolutely right, like, the, the people are going to continue in legislature to try to pass rules to. Encourage or require more dense use of our existing land. And to a certain extent, you know, when you look around, we have a lot of this density already, like. Couple of doors down from the mayor, there's several in the, in the Talcat neighborhood, or, probably near just about every, one of your houses. There's probably a fourplex or like, was a single family house that has five or six units in it now. And some of them are, are obnoxious neighbors, but a lot of them are actually, you don't even notice.
Yeah, I don't even notice them in my neighborhood.
There's, there's a, I don't know how many unit apartment building there is over on.
Sixth.
Sixth and Nelson.
Sixth and Nelson, the, the Radosovich building. I don't know how many units are in that building, it's, it's fairly big, it takes up a half city block, but it. That's, that's middle housing, that's fifteen or sixteen units, they're smaller units, it's an older building, it doesn't really bother anybody. The one right behind State Street School, uh, that one's been recently renovated, it doesn't really bother anybody. And there's probably ten, twelve units in that one. These are the things that the, the state's trying to encourage, and, uh, I only point it out because we already have it. And so think about the rules that are coming, that, that they're trying to force on us. That's what they're trying to reinstate, it's these, you know, didn't have rules for this back in the past, now we do, so they're outlawed. Um, so there is ways to make these things work out, um, it is, uh, it is difficult, nobody likes to be told it. So.
I just want to be mindful, you know, I didn't buy in Brickyard to have my neighbor rent out an A D U. In the back of their house, you know, it's like, you, you want to go into these certain neighborhoods because of their charm on Talcot Street. So I just want to be respectful and mindful of those things when we're thinking about these, you know. Where, where these things should be placed, where they should go, um, because. I agree, some of them that are there are not bad and they're remodeled and they're taken care of and things like that, but in specific. With the A D U's and things like that, I don't want to see that in my neighborhood, um, because.
I think with the, like you were saying, the apartments that are around or the, the sixteen net places. When they're seem to be spread out the way they are, you don't have the densification and they're within neighborhoods that, that. You know, also create a great neighboring feeling, so I've, I've been in a lot of different places. And then the toughest places I've been in is like the projects where an apartment complex is where it's stacked apartments everywhere. Crime's high, kids have nothing to do except for getting in trouble, we create our own flick, our parents are doing whatever. And we run amok, or the parents are running amok, or whatever, because that's what's all around you. So I think that's where we benefited within this community is having, you know, those areas that are already there, like on township and Fadago. There's like a, an apartment kind of area right there, um, they're within the parks, within the community, so. I don't, you know, like I said, I don't myself want to see densification, um, I know that they may push it, we may push back. And say we've already got it, which would be nice, but. It is, it is a tough.
So the only way really, I mean, right now is everybody seems to be on board with not wanting, you know, a lot of density. Um, you have to be able to annex in additional property north.
Yeah.
And that was shut down.
Yeah.
So, quite honestly, we've put ourselves in a rock and hard spot.
But I, but I, part of my reason for trying to shut that down for right now was because we're putting the carpet full of horse. Where I don't, that would have impacted the area of Evergreen and the kids can't even drink the water at that school. So now we're catching up and trying to make these things before, I'm not saying I didn't want it annexed in ever, I'm just saying. Wait until we're ready for it, and right now we're not, so.
I got a lot of numbers, like I said at that last planning, uh, meeting we had, the district meeting. And I looked over the growth and it, it was a lot different than what I assumed it was, right? So that's where you always get into trouble by assuming, and so I, I requested them a little bit. And so when they came in, the growth levels over the thirty years have not been alarming to where I thought they would be. Especially, I, I anticipated a chart like this with, with a massive spike over the last ten years and uncontrollable going up. But i- it's really just gone like that and it's, you know, seems a bit more calculated and a bit more consistent in its upper row. Not to say that, oh, we should just continue to, to double every so often, but if we've been going this much since. You know, when I wasn't here, my parents were here in, in two thousand, so I was here visiting a lot, but, um, when I, since I've been here. You know, it hasn't seemed like it's like out of control, um, although we do see a lot more building, we see a lot more. Uh, I don't think Brickyard was there at that time when I first got here, maybe it was. Was it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, uh, but the other one that's over by the, um, golf course, that one, a development one, there's been a number of developments that have gone in. And so that's been something that. Are, yeah, that's been a big, big, huge, like, growth right there, um, so there's been those things that have happened, and so I hear from certain people. Like over in the more rural neighborhood, Fadago is where they live, Fadago and, um, ninth or tenth street. And so on that, it just seemed like this is an elevator that's never changing. Go to, my buddy lives over on, uh, at the trail, the, the girl I go to church with, and she's like, oh yeah, this is, you know, it's constantly changing, there's constantly more going on. So, um, the numbers were surprising, I did look those over and I was, I was surprised, I don't know if you guys have, or took that in as well.
It does put back to actually what both Mark and John have shared in that, um, the. The recession kind of threw a wrench into it, but it always has been just kind of the steady ebb and flow. We have growth and then it eases off, and then we have growth and then it eases off, and I think you pointed out, Mark. The last time that you spoke about growth and housing. In that we thought we would have like twenty thousand people by now, or something to that, about twenty, twenty-five thousand. And in fact, we're, we're about half of that, so, um, we just haven't grown like it was predicted we would, so.
Even without that growth.
Oh, that's always gonna happen, no matter how you grow, there's always gonna be something that's lacked, you know, something's gonna fall behind, it, it's just. The way it goes, uh, if it's not the schools, it's gonna be the road, or we're gonna have problems with the sewage, or there, there's always gonna be something. That we don't catch in time and that's just kind of how the game goes and it's our job to try.
I think right now, the planning department is taking into account, and I'm not fully, you know, everything you're doing, but the sewage. When you mentioned that, I'm looking at the spray water treatment, that's amazing, they're kind of bringing that together. Um, and the roads, things like that that are coming together as we get ready, so it seems like we are kind of like. Priming ourselves for the perfect time of growth if we were to grow in a way, um, we, like I said, growing, we grew. It looks like eight percent in the last five years, so if we're looking at something like that, or even double the eight percent to sixteen percent in the next five years. The infrastructure is definitely getting into place and we're gonna see an opportunity where we didn't grow too quickly, too quick, too soon, early enough without making it through.
And I think the city staff has done a wonderful job with trying to help keep us on the right track, so that we are kind of keeping all these things moving at the same speed. And getting us, uh, to where we can handle the growth incrementally, um, the schools are kind of a problem, I guess, Washington-wide. Looking at how these levies and bonds are passed, the, the super majority or the majorities that are required. And the stipulations that are on it make it so difficult to get them through that, and that's really what's killing us, uh, killing the schools, I guess, that's. That's their own separate issue, but, uh.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with us as a city and it's not our business, not really.
Yeah.
But it's the, um, it's the people who live in this community, they're the ones who determine what's gonna happen with the schools.
You have a kid that's in a classroom of twenty people, they're gonna get more quality education than a classroom of thirty-four people.
Well, you're speaking to the quiet here, I hear you, but it's not, it's not. Not our job, that is not.
Which is understandable, but growth, as we were discussing, is the amount that are gonna be densified within those schools, even though they come from outside of the city. So we do play a part in that, as far as like the annex, I mean, that would bring in more people to the school, which sounds like, you know, north. Good idea, something to think about or moving forward, not complete, but infrastructure in place, but.
Falls in part though with the apartments, you've got high density, so then you've got those kids going to Central and Mary Purcell, so. You know, we're, we're going to encounter it regardless, wherever it is, it's a matter of how do we develop and grow responsibly? And our, our best bet is to go north where there's more space, uh, depending on zoning, to be able to. Allow that to happen, otherwise we are going to be in high density. Or we're going to be stagnant, which isn't good either, because we're already getting to a point where there's, you said three right now, new. New requests earlier today. Permits? Yeah, just, just a handful.
Yeah, I think we've had two building permit applications since the beginning of March.
Right, and so, you know, we, we also have to think forward, knowing that, you know, if this is, if something is annexed in. Wherever it is, it's not just tomorrow, it's going to have, you know, this is going to happen, there's still a, you know, there's still a lot of processes. That have to happen for anybody to build or do anything, and it could be years, you know, they could be annexed in and, and. The property owners could still choose to do nothing with it, but at least there's the opportunity, and right now there is not that opportunity, so, I mean, that's.
I agree with that, hundred percent, yeah.
I think a lot of ways, the cities, we're doing everything that we can realistically to try to help move things in the right direction, if we can get. More land available for housing, you know, eventually the other things will fall into place, like you said, we, we don't have control of schools, but. Eventually it will hit a point where people decide that they want to do something about it and they will catch up. Um, just like Cook Road, you know, if we hit the point where the county is getting, uh, our, their constituents screaming at them. That they need to expand that road, they will expand the road, they're probably not gonna do it a minute before that with, uh, widening Cook for the rest of the way here. But realistically, that's what gets those things done in a lot of instances, you know, they don't tend to just go, hey, you know, we ought to widen this road for. Fifty million dollars, why not, let's just throw some money at it and see if people move there. It's people move there, businesses are coming in, and we hit a point where it must get done, that's usually how these types of things end up. Happening for us, I think.
It is nice to get it done before it must be done.
Yes.
That's great hopefulness, if you do have that, like the annex, then another department could start planning, well, this may happen, or it will happen. Because it's now annexed, now we can start modifying in this area, if it's not or it's shot down, then there's no reason to put resources there. Stick with the resources, so it is about.
I think we're doing a good job with that, I think that we are, yeah, we are planning for them to come and they are coming, but we are not playing catch-up, which is really nice, so.
And I would, I, and I would also say that from, from my standpoint, I am actually a, against rezoning. Any commercial property to residential, because we have such limited, uh, property available to us, and if we want any opportunity for economic development. Um, and, and having that to bring in, then we need to keep that.
I agree.
For its purpose.
I always think the only reason why I voted against that, because I was waiting for these numbers, I'd read this huge report, I'm like. But I didn't get these numbers, so I don't understand how that's going on, but I do agree, uh, commercial, and when you look at that space near Dankey, and you're kind of thinking. The stores, the businesses that can go there, business by the, um, golf course, you know, that's where they're. Different areas like that, that's, that's a whole, whole in itself, over there on, um, it was Reed Street, you know, and I believe it was. And, uh, Mon Paul Stores or something of, of uniqueness within that area.
Well, and we need to be conscious too of the type of housing and developments that are put in, that are going to be able to sustain. Sustain the city's costs, right? So it's one of the things that the, the port was very blatant about, is that when they're doing these studies, they don't look at it as what is the. You know, what is the, uh, low income wages, it's, okay, what does, what average household. Means needs to happen in order to sustain what we need to function. And that's something that we need to be aware of too, uh, especially when we don't have the industry pulling in the way that we would like it to, right? Or we're gonna end up in a low-income bedroom community and we won't have the funds to be able to support it, constantly asking to raise taxes and stuff that we don't want to raise. I don't like taxes, I don't like these additional taxes and I don't like having, raising taxes for anybody, especially when, you know. But for garbage, sewer, uh, water, like, all of these things that are necessities. And our job to help make sure that our constituents have our necessities. And so, I mean, that's, that, we have to be very conscious of what we're bringing in and what's expected of us and, and. Being responsible with that.
That's why I like the idea of parks, and, uh, because it kind of shows where you're, you can go and enjoy where your money is. Hey, I put money in this city, while you got roads you're driving on, it's enjoyable, but you're not gonna play on the road. But this is an awesome park, my kids are down at that water park, I actually went to one over in Coraline when they had the guys. People love it, you know, so yeah, seeing that by the teens, they're only gonna create that much more. So their money is well worth it and they're out there enjoying it, and then if anybody has any questions, they're like, hey, I'm playing this, well, even though that's county, you know, I'm doing this. So I'm walking the trail, fishing, I'm playing baseball games.
And we took Eli to Splash Padlam here, uh, to come over the weekend and see the sheer volume of people in that park that were drawn to that. And that it was a huge draw for the community, and so that's, that's a wonderful thing to have, anything that keeps the kids, uh, having fun and not getting in trouble. So, good as far as I'm concerned, so, that's why I was curious about the added cost.
Yeah, I'd be interested, like, um, not to go in the different direction, but parks and recreation again. Is that Y M C A, you got the kids, is that guy comes in, a councilman, I love to go down there and work with them and say, what are your guys' ideas? Let's put up a monitor, let's get a whiteboard out, let's see what you guys envision in your parks or recreation or things like that, or. Here's how you could fundraise, or what would you want to see at a skate competition, or, you know, and just get their minds, get their minds generated.
And end of the conversation.
Wouldn't be, I, I'm more, I would treat them more like business, uh, you know, professionals, and I think that they, as, as I would want to be treated, that is, as, you know. We'd just be like, go sit down and, and as humans, look at the situation and get a different perspective.
Discuss some of that stuff that are, you know, next, next time we have a Parks Committee meeting.
Yeah.
Time to discuss that stuff.
Yeah, that would actually be a neat way to get the kids involved, that would be the why involved.
Yeah.
So Bill was put up a map there, and I don't know, by the one of you, John or, or Mark, we'd want to kind of. Address.
So that, that looks like the county map just showing the city limits in gray, the urban growth area in that darker gray. And, uh, the light green is also urban growth area, but that's the northern state recreation area, so.
Reserve public open space, so it'd be our parks.
Yeah.
So the urban growth area in, in dark gray, that's, that's.
That's where, that's where we can grow into, it's not in city limits now, but under. But under the, the planning regime in place through state growth management act, we've, the county has designated that as our areas to grow into. And, you know, when I look at this, one thing that I'd like to point out is the large gray area to the east of town. Basically between existing city limits and Fruitdale Road is largely developed and developed without sewer, without city streets, without sidewalks, streetlights. Any of the amenities that we would now build in, in our city. That area is largely developed and is not in any likelihood ever going to annex into the city. One, the people there already have their septic water and everything. So there's no incentive for them to want to come into the city. And there's no incentive for the city to ever want to annex that area. Because if we were to annex it, we'd have to then take over building their roads, providing them sewer. They don't want sewer. We don't want to build sewer. So it's just not, we're, we're kind of at an impasse until sewer starts failing out there, which might take hundreds of years. It's unlikely that we'll ever annex in that area. And there's no development pressure in that area because it's already developed. So there's no developers that are saying, oh, you know, there's this nice large piece of land that we would like to develop. So we want to annex it. There's none of that. So that area is kind of no man's land.
So it kind of leaves the west or northwestern and the northern area.
Yeah.
And the northwestern.
What, like half of that was denied last year? Is that right?
I would say, yeah, roughly, well, less than half, but. Maybe a third.
So have we taken this conversation as far, it's, I see it's 10 to eight and.
It seems like it gives people a lot to chew on. I mean, as far as like, whatever, what we can do. I don't know if you guys got ideas on what the council, the better fill with the council fills towards growth. But I think that's really important for planning in the mayor. Just kind of hear a little bit more of a consensus on putting things forth and getting a better idea on that. That's the biggest one in this business that we're all pro business.
So it's housing, what I, what I take away is council's leaning towards growing to the north instead of adding density. Although council's okay with the, some of the existing middle housing that exists in the old part of town. So, you know, perhaps as we're looking at ways to accommodate growth in the future, maybe we do make some provisions to allow some of that missing middle up to, you know, 15 units or so, 15 unit buildings or so in the single family residential zones. If, as Councilman Lavaco was pointing out, it's not a block of, of apartments. So you have a fourplex here, a, a, a 10 unit building there surrounded in neighborhoods of single family homes where it has less of, where it feels like what we've already experienced down in that part of town. And, you know, I'll, I'll chew on that and see if there's ways to, to put something like that together for the council to consider. But, you know, just brainstorming.
Just a question, will council be comfortable with staff just kind of trying to encapsulate, you know, one sentence in each within bullet points underneath what we heard tonight, bringing that back to you. So we're getting this pretty crystal clear on.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I know what I heard tonight on economic, because we did jump around quite a bit on it. You know, if we're wanting to have the coherent message to the development community and the business community side of it. One of the things I've heard, again, I hate to keep going back to my conversations with Peter Janiky, but like it or not, they're the elephant in the, in the room on that. Because a lot of our fate does depend on them continuing to develop here rather than going over home or where their alternatives are. That was, there, there, there's transportation element that they're looking at, making sure that we are getting ahead of that, like that. And I think we are, best we can. But there's also the housing element of that too, that they're very concerned about being able to say that there are houses in the area, not necessarily just in Cedar Valley, but including Cedar Valley for these employees that they're adding. And so am I hearing that the message from council is we want to sanely accommodate that growth as well and encourage that, that kind of density that will allow that. You know, because I think we've had a little bit of a mixed message on that the last couple of years, to be honest with you. And it's been noticed by.
I think that's, with this conversation was kind of like about, just trying to get more, give you guys more of a feel of where the consensus currently is.
And it needs to be responsible. I mean, what kind, what kind of jobs are those providing? You know what I mean? Because when, if you're talking about executives that are making six figures, unless they work all the time and are never home, most of them don't want to live in, in the urban growth apartments, right? They're going to want somewhere where they can bring their families. A lot of the people in those positions don't live in Cedar Valley. They don't even live near it. I mean, the closest might be Big Lake. Then you're going into Anacortes and Bellingham and stuff. So, so they're coming in and so we have to accommodate the kind of how, provide housing that would accommodate the, the kind of people that, that are looking to be coming in. And so it just needs to be responsible. We need to respect that.
Yeah, I could tell you that I wouldn't be able to attract that executive level person here just because John and I had this conversation earlier today. You know, we, we really don't have the, the available property that would accommodate that. See, maybe, maybe up around Hidden Lake in that area.
Yeah, or just eastern here, what is that? Elk Run or Elk Ridge or whatever that is, those homes there that are five acre lots. Yeah, those homes are going for well over a million. And I know they're pulling in people from Belling, who are working in Bellingham.
The company is only going to have, you know, their CEOs, their president and a set of vice presidents, maybe six to eight. Then they'll have their, you know, directors and then they'll have their operations managers. Directors down are, you know, all the way to the lower levels are, you know, as far as Janiky goes, well compensated. And a lot of those people do own homes or buying homes. And, you know, I, I started there through temporary work agency and scrubbing the floor to the bass of tone and just worked hard. And I've been able to move. And I looked through our, our meetings in the mornings and every manager in there was on the floor grinding fiberglass, things like that. And yet they're, they're moved up. So people, there's a lot of growth, but even at the lower levels entry, the wages are better for sure. They're, they're more than fair. So if that's, if that helps with the understanding of that medium home, obviously they're not going to buy a million dollar home.
Well, and that's what we were talking about, I believe, before is, is having that circle of life, right? And we've got, we've got starter homes as well, but we also have opportunity for growth and stuff there. So, you know, maybe somebody comes into town and buys this house and this person turns and buys, you know, buys that. We don't have that opportunity right now. We don't, there's nowhere to move up in a lot of times. Right now people can sell their homes, but where do you go?
Yeah.
You know, for the prices, they're out there right now, it's insane.
Moving up in town is, you know, long time lane. Alderwood, those are kind of, you know, without being, you know, some of the, being downtown in some of the more historic houses, but.
That's staying in the city limits.
That's staying in city limits. Those are the more typical ones. And then there's just north on, on the hill kind of to the, to the west of the Janiky property, everything west facing there, you're getting a lot of larger lots and bigger homes. That seems to be what people have, those, those, you know, one to $200,000 wage earners are seeing. Maybe, probably more than that, to be honest.
But yeah, to answer that question, accommodate, because they're not the only business. They're the largest, I'm sure. They're not the only, the Stargate business. Yeah, there's been a lot of great businesses. So to accommodate their, their needs with growth would be a function.
And that's one of the things for the economic development, not just Janikys, but one of the things that I've also heard as well is well, we could bring our business, but where are we going to get our employees, you know? And so it's creating that opportunity if we, if we can go north and having the opportunity for responsible growth. And maybe it comes down to some single family units and then you have a duplex here and then a couple of single family units and maybe there's a fourplex, you know, it's, it's just, it's looking through all of that and, and just doing it responsibly. Otherwise, you know, you do end up with all of these high density apartments and or, and really high density housing. And then we get right back into the same situation that we've been in. And right now I think, you know, we're tapped out.
Well, then so I'd be interested in hearing if you guys do have a meeting, hearing, hearing what comes of that with the business leaders and other, other professionals and homeowners or whatever. If that is a takeaway from this meeting.
So it's almost a really good discussion. This is a great discussion. And I hope you felt like it was fruitful for yourselves. I know it gave us clarity, which is really helpful. Because Mark is absolutely right. There's been mixed messages and we weren't really sure what you were truly looking at or wanting. So thank you for the clarity. And if there is nothing more, I want to thank Nick and John and Mark for being here tonight, answering questions. Thank you, Chief.
Wake up, Liz.
All right. And so it's eight o'clock. You guys have a great evening. We are adjourned.